Are you ready? Good evening. Tonight we continue with the second of our three public hearings on the 2026 operating and capital budgets. We'll hear from the community college of Valdeguayna County and the administrative branch of the county government. When we get to the Q and A portion, I'd like the members to please only ask a few questions at a time to give everyone a chance. And then we'll come back for additional questions if time permits. We'll begin this evening with public comments. I believe we have one. Is there a Gavin Neal here? Gavin Neal going once, going twice. Gavin's not here. Now we'll bring up CCAC. Dr. Bullock, how are you?
I'm well.
We are well. It's good to see you again.
Unknown participant is now joining. Unknown participant is now joining.
Hey, Penn, are you okay?
I'm good.
Jordan and I are unfamiliar affairs.
Yes. Doctor.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's good to see everyone. I'd like to introduce Kathy Jacobs. She's the vice president for finance. She joined the college on July 1, 2025. Today we are here to present the college's summary of the budget presentation. We'd like to start. Each of you have one of our packets. And you will see on the front cover the new Center for Education, Innovation, and Training. We want to thank you for the investment that you provided to support CCAC in the construction of this new facility that has been a great resource to the college. The college, as you know, serves about 30,000 students across four campuses and three centers. Our demographics continue to shift. Increasing number of female women students. 68% of our students are part-time. 45% are enrolled in career programs and 55% in transfer programs. That number is steadily shifting. What's really exciting to share is that when we look at the students who select the community college as their first choice compared to our public private institutions, students who choose the CCAC in the first two years will save about $26,000 compared to a public education and $75,000 compared to a private education. As students go through their studies, 81% of our students graduate debt-free. 88% of our graduates live and work in the county. In one of our prize programs, 92% of our CCAC nursing programs students have a job within the first six months. This past spring, we conducted an economic impact study to see the impact that the college is having on our region. Our alumni impact has a $2 billion impact. Operation spending has an impact of $106.8 million. Our student spending impact is about $26.4 million. But the annual impact of CCAC is $2.1 billion or equivalent to 22,938 jobs. When we compare ourselves to students or individuals who do not get an education beyond the high school, our students will earn an additional $11,600 each year compared to someone with a high school diploma working in Pennsylvania. When we look at the return on investment for every dollar spent, students gain $5.50. Taxpayers gain $2.70 in added tax revenue and public sector savings. And society gains an additional $10.90 in added income and social savings. Across all of our campuses, we have a myriad of support services to ensure that our students have access to the services that they need to be successful in their studies, including academic advising, both academic planning and course scheduling, student success coaches, counseling center services, personal transfer and career counseling, military and veteran services, behavior health services, disability resource services, resource navigators to support students in navigating through the various programs and services, and then a list of scholarships, transportation assistance, food, pantries, clothes closets, and emergency funding. We continue to ensure that our programs represent the needs of our community and our region. We offer over 130 programs, including the arts and humanities, business and accounting, computer information technology, culinary arts and hospitality, tourism, general studies, liberal arts, industrial technology, trades and transportation, nursing and allied health programs, science and mathematics, and social sciences and education. Our programs align with many institutions. Many students seamlessly transfer to colleges over 500 colleges. We have articulation agreements with 40-plus colleges and universities, and more are being added each year. We pride ourselves in indicating that CCAC is an affordable choice to get high-quality education for a transfer or to earn a credential that goes directly into the workforce. When we compare ourselves to the other 14 community colleges, you will see on page nine that CCAC is the most affordable institution of all of the colleges in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Our tuition for '25-'26 is $130,000 per credit, along with the additional fees taking our total up to $167,050. When we look at our full-time enrollment, starting on page 11, you will see over the last three years we have had a steady increase. In 2022-23, we were at $17,082.
You ready? Good evening. Tonight, we continue with the second of our three public hearings on the 2026 operating and capital budgets. We'll hear from the community college of Allegheny County and the administrative branch of the county government. When we get to the Q and A portion, I'd like the members to please only ask a few questions at a time to give everyone a chance, and then we'll come back for additional questions if time permits. We'll begin this evening with public comments. I believe we have one. Is there a Gavin Neal here? Gavin Neal going once, going twice. Gavin's not here. Now we'll bring up CCAC. Dr. Bullock, how are you?
I'm well.
We are well. It's good to see you again.
Unknown participant is now joining. Unknown participant is now joining. Unknown participant is now joining.
Hey, Penn, are you okay?
I'm good.
Jordan and I are unfamiliar first.
Doctor.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's good to see everyone. I'd like to introduce Kathy Jacobs. She's the vice president for finance. She joined the college on July 1, 2025. Today, we are here to present the college's summary of the budget presentation. We'd like to start. Each of you have one of our packets, and you will see on the front cover the new Center for Education, Innovation, and Training. We want to thank you for the investment that you provided to support CCAC in the construction of this new facility that has been a great resource to the college. The college, as you know, serves about 30,000 students across four campuses and three centers. Our demographics continue to shift. Increasing number of female women students. 68% of our students are part-time. 45% are enrolled in career programs and 55% in transfer programs. That number is steadily shifting. What's really exciting to share is that when we look at the students who select the community college as their first choice compared to our public private institutions, students who choose the CCAC in their first two years will save about $26,000 compared to a public education and $75,000 compared to a private education. As students go through their studies, 81% of our students graduate debt-free. 88% of our graduates live and work in the county. In one of our prize programs, 92% of our CCAC nursing programs, students have a job within the first six months. This past spring, we conducted an economic impact study to see the impact that the college is having on our region. Our alumni impact has a $2 billion impact. Operation spending has an impact of $106.8 million. Our student spending impact is about 26.4, but the annual impact of CCAC is $2.1 billion or equivalent to 22,938 jobs. When we compare ourselves to students or individuals who do not get an education beyond the high school, our students will earn an additional $11,600 each year compared to someone with a high school diploma working in Pennsylvania. When we look at the return on investment for every dollar spent, students gain $5.50. Taxpayers gain $2.70 in added tax revenue and public sector savings. And society gains an additional $10.90 in added income and social savings. Across all of our campuses, we have a myriad of support services to ensure that our students have access to the services that they need to be successful in their studies, including academic advising, both academic planning and course scheduling, student success coaches, counseling center services, personal transfer and career counseling, military and veteran services, behavior health services, disability resource services, resource navigators to support students in navigating through the various programs and services, and then a list of scholarships, transportation assistance, food pantries, clothes closets, and emergency funding. We continue to ensure that our programs represent the needs of our community and our region. We offer over 130 programs, including the arts and humanities, business and accounting, computer information technology, culinary arts and hospitality, tourism, general studies, liberal arts, industrial technology, trades and transportation, nursing and allied health programs, science and mathematics, and social science and education. Our programs align with many institutions. Many students seamlessly transfer to colleges, over 500 colleges. We have articulation agreements with 40-plus colleges and universities, and more being added each year. We pride ourselves in indicating that CCAC is an affordable choice to get high-quality education for transfer or to earn a credential that goes directly into the workforce. When we compare ourselves to the other 14 community colleges, you will see on page nine that CCAC is the most affordable institution of all of the colleges in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Our tuition for '25-'26 is $130,000 per credit, along with the additional fees, taking our total up to $167.50. When we look at our full-time enrollment, starting on page 11, you will see over the last three years, we have had a steady increase. In 2022-23, we were at 17,082 FTE. In '23-'24, we were at 17,529. And then for '24-'25, we were at 18,302, which represents about a 4.4% increase. Continuing on page 12, you will also see the full-time equivalent by semester. In the summer, which is our smallest area, we have been steady with the last summer session, significantly higher at 969. In the fall, there was also a steady increase from '22 through '25, starting at 7,521 and ending at 7,722. In the spring, there's also been a steady increase in our FTE from 6,298 to 6,973. And then summer 1, with a steady increase also ending this past summer at 2,268. We build our budget on FTE, and we have met our FTE over the last three years. In review of our graduation rate, which is also important, based on mental states, the expected graduation rate based on their measure was at 23%, and CCAC has had a steady increase in our enrollment, in our graduation. Based on the numbers, you add three years to it to know the year that its impact. And so for fall '18, that would represent graduates in 2021. In fall of '19, that would represent graduates in 2022. And in fall of 2021, that represent the most recent graduate data, which is at 24.2%, which aligns and exceeds our crediting body's graduation rate of 23%. I'll ask Vice President Jacobs to review the budget contribution summary.
Good evening. So the summary of our budget contributions, the operating budget is supported by tuition, fees, appropriations, and other miscellaneous revenue. So for '25-'26, our budget was built on a 4.2% increase from the '24-'25 budget. It's based on 18,230 FTEs. So our tuition revenue that we plan to bring in is 32,831 with fees of almost $10 million. State aid of $40 million, county aid with the appropriations that go for capital debt service would be $36 million, and other revenue would be $5.246. So when you look for the, it is a 2% increase in the county contribution from 35 point, I'm sorry, 36.04 to 36.76. And I would tell you, on page 15, there was a typo. The 2% increase is 36.04 to 36.76, not the 35.3, so my apologies for that. And it does include the 3.75 million for debt service that is offered to us. Workforce development, we plan on bringing in non-credit programming revenue of 3.5. We've been steadily increasing that. And lab fees will generate about a million. So we didn't institute a tuition increase this year from $126 per credit to 130. It's a 3% increase. All other fees remain the same. We did not increase anything else. So turning to page 16, 16 and 17, there are some pie charts to show you some of the breakout for our operating and plant funds. This includes both funds. So our largest portions of operating revenues come from state, county, and credit student revenue. And the largest portions of the operating expenses go to institutional support, credit instruction for quality instruction, and plant operations. Now, in our 2024-2025 budget, using some of the appropriations that we got from the county, we were able to support mental health services on all of our campuses for students. We increased testing centers on each campus. We introduced some online tutoring and proctoring to enhance some of the offerings we had previously had. We increased smart classrooms, some digital and technical abilities online. We increased some allocations to our allied health program or nursing program. We have academic centers on each campus to help students than need, and we can get some tutoring personally, excuse me. We did do some miscellaneous repairs on some buildings that were needed, and we updated some art and lab equipment.
And when you look at each of our campuses, you will identify, you will see that there are some unique program offerings, starting with our Allegheny campus. With the addition of the new Center for Education Innovation, we have the building automation systems, the new culinary arts program, food service, restaurant management, mechatronics, radiation, therapy, respiratory, and of course, nursing. On our Boris campus, it's primarily medical allied health programs, including anesthesia, technologists, central service technician, diagnostic medical sonography, magnetic resonance imaging, physical therapy assistant, radiologic technologists, surgical technologists, and nursing. On the North Campus, American Sign Language interpreting for the death, nursing, criminal justice, psychology, and education. And on the, on page 22, with the assistance of funding received from Allegheny County, we were able to renovate several nursing spaces on North Campus, which provides students a state-of-the-art learning experience that align and mirrors the hospital's equipment and technology that they interact with once they're in the hospital setting. So we allow students to get the firsthand training for each of those areas. At the South Campus, where we have our aviation program, which we were able to award over $100,000, thanks for the assistance received from the county for the Flight Time scholarships. That has been a great support for many of the students. In addition to aviation, the campus offers film technician, medical assistant, phlebotomy, and theater, theater art. Nursing and allied health continues to be a great resource for our region, graduating over 1,000 graduates in the nursing program and almost 1,000 graduates in the allied health programs. In 2024, our nursing program ranked number seven out of 536 and number three of the associate's nursing school in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. 92% of our nursing program graduates have jobs within the first six months. The program is a full state board of nursing approval, full mental states accreditation, and continuing ACEN accreditation. At our West Hills Center, the programs that we offer align with our trades, workforce, mechatronics, robotics, polymer tech, automotive, HVAC, plumbing, welding, union apprenticeships, and our brand-new EV technicians program. With our trades, we have strong partnerships developed with ironworker, carpentry, sheet metal, plumbing, electrical, stationary operating engineer, heavy equipment, and most recently, we developed the, I just lost the name, bricklayer, bricklayer trades. Workforce development, we are doing a lot of work with our short-term training programs. This is on page 28, with CDL Class A, Class B, nurse aide, maternity doula, home health aide, wastewater technician. We are also doing a lot of work in our Public Safety Institute, including both our paramedic non-credit program, a minimum of 22 students in each of the cohorts with almost a 100% completion rate of their certification as a paramedic. And then on page 30, this gives you an example of the types of jobs that our graduates are getting when they complete the CDL Class A training. They're earning a very competitive wage. And then with our Class B training, which has also been a plus in preparing persons to support passenger endorsement training in trucks, large buses, delivery drivers, and dump trucks, which has been a great resource for preparing a workforce. And then we have the fire vest scholarship program. Ever since the beginning in 2009, 509 Allegheny County volunteer fires have received a fire vest scholarship. 70 fire vest students enrolled in academic '24-'25. 37 are enrolled in the current academic year, and 154 fire vest students have graduated from the program. Then on page 34, this is just a, again, a review of the investment of the new Center for Education, Innovation, and Training, that many of you had a chance to come and tour and see firsthand the new programs, culinary arts, baking and pastry, industry 4.0 concepts and foundation, automatic industrial technology, robotics, and mechatronics, advanced manufacturing technology, ad-lift manufacturing and design, 3D printing, CAD, CAM, CNS technology. And each of these programs are designed to build a pipeline that goes directly into work and increase the opportunity for students to earn a short-term credential that leads to a competitive wage. With the support of our educational foundation, on page 37, the foundation endowment is about $30,913,000. It raised about $4.4 million in fiscal year '24-'25. They distributed over $600,000 in scholarships in fiscal year '24-'25 and distributed over 450 scholarship awards from the Allegheny County Dr. Charles J. Montoni Endowment Scholarship that was provided by the county, which has been a great resource.
So when we come to the '26-'27 budget requests that we have, we are requesting a 2% increase from 36,039,412 to 36,76200, and that does include the 3.75 for the debt service.
And then finally, if you look on the last page, you do, you can see the number of students that are in your various districts as a point of contact. We want to thank you for the opportunity to present CCAC's budget information, and we are open for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, doctor. Thank you, Kathy. Just something I noticed when I was looking at that, your average age is 28. Has that constantly gone up over the last couple of years? Is that like housewives going back to work and people just changing jobs or?
Yes, it's going up. Two years ago, it was eight, average age was 26.
Yeah, I thought it was lower, yeah.
Yes. And what you, what we are seeing, individuals with families coming back for upskilling, retraining, earning a credential, going into a new career, which has allowed the college to rethink, redesign how we deliver our credentials from being the traditional four-year only to short-term credentials, one-year certifications, industry-specific certifications that one can take and be able to get the credential, go to work, continue their studies with that credential, laddering toward the associate's degree, and then transfer to a four-year college of choice if desired.
That's wonderful. That's great. I will go to my left, Councilman Bottom. We'll start with you first.
Thank you, Chair Palmasina. Thank you for being here, Dr. Bullock. And my only question is, I noticed that your enrollment rates have increased across multiple different sectors, across the summer, across the fall. What do you attribute that increase in enrollment to? Because we just want to give you the credit for enrolling even more students.
Well, we were directly impacted during the pandemic. During the pandemic, we lost about 27% of our student body. We recognized that we could not continue to do business as usual, so we put together a strategic enrollment retention management team that worked collaboratively over several months to develop a strategic enrollment retention management plan. The plan outlines several strategies that we are implementing to identify, increase our penetration rate with our K through 12, to expand our outreach to community-based organizations, to connect with business and industry, to identify specific credentials that they need, and integrating that into our curricula, expanding our marketing material. You probably awakened every morning with a CCAC commercial that promotes the four-letter word, no debt. So all of those factors have contributed to attracting students. We also revise our scheduling to align with needs of our students, and we redesign our advising and counseling to allow students to be able to access online or in person, put in place the 24-hour tutoring service and support services, offer expanded tours of facilities, and when students come to any one of our campuses or centers, they recognize the high-quality education instruction. The technology is comparative to any of our four-year institutions. Our faculty are passionate about teaching. Our staff are very welcoming. So putting all that together has had a positive impact in attracting increased number of students coming, selecting CCAC as their first choice.
So it's just luck then? No, no, that was extremely comprehensive. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Philiagi.
Thanks. It's hard to follow that, Jordan, but Councilwoman Bada. But yes, also thank you both for coming in to speak. And I think, I feel like, I'm gonna take a moment, I feel like I'm channeling Councilwoman Hallam here, because my first budget hearing, which was a couple of years ago, she basically almost jumped out of her seat with how supportive she was with the CCAC program. She wanted to give you all, but a lot more money, and she was enthusiastic. And I'm like, what's going on here? Well, I'm not going to give you more money than you're asking for, but I'm certainly going to say yes to what you are asking for, and I am super enthusiastic. You had me at the Center for Innovation. You had me at all of the outreach that you have done with council and with students in District 2. So I want to say, first of all, I am really grateful. I do have a couple of things I wanted to ask. You talked about strategic, this is a strategic, and it's clear that it is. You're going in with a scalpel, you know? You're not just abroad. And I'm going to encourage you to continue that momentum, because I still think there are places to reach, especially in District 2. Quaker Valley, North Allegheny, Pine Ridge Land. It's still not, we need a cultural shift. Student debt, I'm going to tell you, hasn't hit this district the same as other districts. I can admit that, but it is still there. My own son is going in, he's in law school, he's going into the Army, into the JAG Corps, and that is going to also help him with some of his student debt. We can get a hold of this earlier than law school. And North Allegheny, Quaker Valley, and Pine Ridge Land need to realize that. This is, this is a real education. So I'm going to encourage you to continue with that strategic momentum. Question I have, again, so complimentary. You talked about the articulation agreements with 40-plus colleges and universities. Are those colleges and universities in Pennsylvania? And if they're not, tell us, because who isn't participating in Pennsylvania? This has to be something that is an all Pennsylvania in thing, don't you think?
Right. And the numbers are inclusive of all of the PASHI colleges.
Okay.
As well as other colleges in Pennsylvania. And then the 500,000 are representative of all the colleges that any one of our students have selected to transfer to by choice. But the clear articulation agreements that are in place are the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Okay. Thank you very much. And, you know, keep us informed if that's not something that's going in the positive direction. The other, so I am impressed that the, in all of the Commonwealth, that CCAC is the best bang for the buck, right? That's page, oh my God, I gotta put on my glasses, nine. And so we're at the top of the list there as far as the value for the student. Where does CCAC fall in the rank of pay for educators? Are we also in a good range for that?
I don't have that data to show how we compare. It's something that we will have to look at.
There's a guy here who probably can tell us, right? And he's sitting in the back about the educators and the rank of how we, how we rank in the Commonwealth, how much we pay our educators within CCAC. But maybe you can get us that information. It's not, it just, I'm curious, because I think there certainly is a causal connection, right, between a satisfied, fulfilled workforce and the students, right? And the progress in the, of the students and the production. There was maybe one other question that I had. Okay. Okay. Work, page 15, workforce development, non-credit programming will generate $3.5 million. I'm super excited about that. Can you give me an example of what that is and how you arrived at the figure? Because that's great. That's a great, that's a big amount.
Yes, and that number has had a steady increase. It's based on a variety of continued education courses, including the paramedic, the EMT, the CBL, the bus training, the Leadership Academy, any specialized training that an industry will ask the college to prepare. And that comes from planning and outreach and partnering, and that number is an accurate number representing the hard work that the entire workforce division is doing.
That's great. Final thing, page 23, South Campus Aviation Management. Do you guys have any air traffic controller classes? Now, that sounds like I'm not articulating it correctly.
Oh, no.
But we're hearing on the news, right, air traffic controllers and how we're all, all of us will be affected at the airports because of this deficit in that industry. Is there something we can upscale to provide workforce for that industry?
Well, the aviation program does have the ability to, for the students to go into the air traffic control program. About eight years ago, we reached out to explore developing a program, and at that time, the demand was not high. So the demand has returned, so we will revisit that to see how we can either partner with the existing program for students to seamlessly transfer into or launch one at CCAC.
Awesome, I know you will. And then finally, just to keep encouraging you to the nursing programs that we have, which are phenomenal, keep reaching out to jail or the Allegheny County Jail and the Canes as being a place that somehow we can partner to get more of our own people within, that graduate from CCAC, to go into those jobs, so we can alleviate the contracted services and help county employees with the pension system, but also provide them with good jobs that have good benefits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Paul Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to tell my colleague, Councilwoman Philiagi, Hallam wasn't the only one jumping out of her seat about getting more money. But when you deal with Hallam, you're always kind of second best. You're always, just the way it is. And I wanted to, Dr. Bullock, I wanted to also say, I'm proud of the fact, I've been part of the Board of Trustees now for a long time, and I wanted to just emphasize the fact that you came in as a change agent, and you changed the whole, not just the curriculum, you changed everything. You changed the whole nature of CCAC. And I, and I knew that coming in, and I'm proud to have been able to support you through all of this. And I took a lot of hell from a lot of old timers over those years, because what's he doing? And it just went on and on. And I never wavered. I knew we were on the right path with you. And I'll give you a similar comparison. When Chuck Knoll came, came into Pittsburgh, Dan Rooney knew, even after he went 1-13 in his first season, he knew he was heading in the right direction. And I know we had a lot of ups and downs at the beginning, going through a lot of change. I commend you and your staff. And all the time, during all of this, every time we had a staff member leave, we brought a new member in that was just as good and not better than the last one. And that's because CCAC has become a destination now for possibly, you know, new administrators, new teachers, so on and so forth. That wasn't the case at one time, you know? And finally, I want to just mention too, I always, always mention about CCAC being the biggest bargain in the family budget. People have to be foolish. If you have young children today, and they're not sure what they want to do or where they want to go as far as the college is concerned, they should come to CCAC. And if they don't know what they're doing after two years in, then, after that, then, then, you know, God help them. So, yeah, it's, it's a, it's been a wonderful ride following through all these years. And I know sometimes I have a hard time getting there on Thursdays, as you know. But basically, I'm proud of the fact that when I see CAC, the advertisements and all the, all the different commercials and things that we're doing now, I sit there with a lot of pride, knowing that I contribute a little bit to helping this move along. And I, and I, again, commend you and thank you very much for your service, and the whole staff, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Councilman Nakratiakas.
Thank you, Chair. So like Councilmember Philiagi, I actually had the same question about aviation, so thanks for answering that. And then to follow up, also on my list for the nursing programs, do you have a sense of the percentage of students that graduate from your program that then get, that go to the county for employment?
I do not know the stat where they go. I do know that over 90% of them have their job in the first six months of getting it. What we could probably look at is doing, ensuring that the county is an active participant in the job.
Job pairs, yeah.
Because that's the point of hiring.
Mm-hmm.
Because once students get that connection of a job offer and it's their first offer, they take the offer that comes on the table. But I made a note to see how we can ensure that more students are aware of the opportunities at the jail and at the cane. We do our CNA in partnership with the cane, so the CNA is one of our largest partners for preparing CNAs to support cane's organization. But I will follow up with the nursing to see about the placement.
Thank you. Regarding the foundation, every year, is it a specific percentage that you take from the endowment to award those various scholarships? Is it consistent year after year, or does it fluctuate?
Over the last three years, the amount of funding that the foundation has allocated has steadily increased. One part of that increase is the $10 million investment that Allegheny County provided to endow the Dr. Charles J. Montoni Scholarship. And last year, it awarded over 450 scholarships, and this year is projected to be over 600,000. And it's based on the interest of the endowment versus the actual principal.
Okay, thank you. And do you anticipate any impacts to your program, to your funding? Do you have any federal funding that you receive that will be impacted in the coming years? Whether that's a pass-through through some of the, I see in the pie chart, there's money that you all receive from the state. Is that a pass-through of federal funds that will be impacted in years to come that we have to be aware of?
It's special programs that we, for example, Keys Program that works with single moms in providing the wraparound service and support. We, we apply for various grants, and those grants are specific to special programs. We do not incorporate that in the actual overall year-to-year expectation unless the funding is awarded. When our grants are discontinued, then that program discontinues. I'm not aware of any federal program that we've had that we have sustained beyond the funding that was allocated by the program. And I can defer to the Vice President if there's some additional information.
I don't have any additional information at this point, but I don't, I also don't see any problem with any of the funding coming through the way as planned. And we don't, we do plan pretty conservatively, so, you know, we're always very cautious about that in case something should happen, but we don't see any effect coming through right away.
Okay, thank you for that. That's encouraging news. For the Fire Vest program, we often hear just that it gets promoted so frequently to the volunteer fire departments. Do you think that we have to do more to promote it to others, you know, who are in the EMT program, the paramedic program, et cetera, et cetera? Is that something that we should be doing? Or do you think that there's sufficient information shared out there that people are aware that it can extend to the other programs?
There's a lot of awareness, specifically with the EMT and the paramedic, that those numbers have tripled.
Oh, okay.
And I can follow up and show you the annual numbers for graduates last year. It was, we've served over about 10,000 individuals in the Public Safety Institute that was inclusive of EMT, AEMT, and paramedic in Allegheny County and surrounding counties. So it's not just Allegheny County, it's the surrounding counties, because many of our smaller counties do not have training programs for EMT, and they have selected CCAC as their choice for getting that training.
Thank you. I just wanted to end on a thank you to you and all of your staff to opening the doors to members of council for the tour this year, the Allegheny campus. It was really beneficial to all of us, and it's a beautiful facility, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, it is. Councilman Grisbeck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you both for your presentation and for your time. Going to start by echoing Councilwoman Nakratiakas' comments, especially the Culinary Arts Program, the resources that you all have available there, and the Mechatronics Programs, program, both from a resource standpoint, but also from a background and experience of your instructors. It was really fantastic to see some younger instructors who had industry experience that wanted to come to CCAC pass on their knowledge to the next generation of students. I feel like it's often a lot easier for students to connect with folks who are a little bit younger and more similar in their lived experiences. And I think from talking to a few students there, it was clear that that was resonating with them as well. Also, want to echo the comments about the nursing program. Do you want to ask, though, if you know that if either the jail or the cane hospitals participate in any clinical opportunities for your students? I know it can be really difficult to compete with, you know, the pits, the do canes, to try to get clinical hours at your UPMC's and your AHN's. So you're aware of if any Allegheny County facilities assist you in that regard?
The only clinical that I'm aware of with the cane is with our CNA program. That I do know definitively. I will have to confirm for the registered nurse program.
Okay. I don't know what resources, you know, we as the county provide to facilitate that, but I think it could be a potential benefit going down that path from both a county standpoint in terms of attracting new nurses, which is obviously something that we've talked about that we struggle with, but also from your perspective and potentially getting those clinical hours filled in, you know, meaningful ways, a little bit easier. On your budgetary request, you have 36.76 million down. Is that the, that amount that you're receiving, is that your full request that you put forth to the county?
36.76.
Okay. And then the only other question I have, as you mentioned, I believe it was 27% of your students were lost during COVID, is that correct? Where do you currently stand now compared to where you were at in the beginning prior to COVID? Was that roughly 20% decrease?
We are closing that gap. Prior to COVID, we were right around 37,000 students, and we are now about 30,000 students. So we are steadily moving in a positive trajectory. Now, we do not anticipate returning to being 37,000 students within the next two or three years, but there will be some levels of steady growth moving back in a positive direction.
Sure. I mean, I think it's, you know, pretty clear that everything you've laid out, it's obvious that you're addressing the current needs of students, making things flexible from an online perspective. I know for busy folks like myself, I just recently finished my master's online, and just having that option available, it makes it so much easier for students to access all the great programs that CCAC has to offer. So very much appreciate you all being very proactive and understanding of what students are looking for nowadays. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Now we'll go to who's on the phone, I believe, Councilwoman Hallam.
Thank you so much, Chairman Paul Messina. Hi, guys. Sorry I couldn't be there tonight in person, but you know how much I love you, so I don't need to tell you that. I think Councilmember Philiagi covered that for me. But I just want to ask, you know, if we could give you a blank check, what is it that you would want more than anything else? And if it's a specific project, how much, do you have any idea or a ballpark how much it would cost?
If you can give us a blank check, we would cover all debt. We would do our very best to increase salaries to be as competitive as we could with our faculty, staff, and administrators, and assist us with renovating 834 Ridge Avenue as our new Public Safety Institute. It's what we are working diligently on right now.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. President Katina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dr. Bullock, for coming before us tonight. And I think it was a great presentation. I'm going to circle back to some of the questions my colleagues have already asked, and I just have one simple question. Could we come up with a program similar to Fire Vest, but for nurses in the cane facilities or the jail?
Love it.
Got my question.
Yes, it is.
I will take that back for discussion, to present with the nursing department and ask, what will it take for the college to develop a nursing partnership specifically with the jails that mirrors or models the Fire Vest program?
Love it.
And the Canes as well?
And the Canes.
Anything else?
And that's it, that's all I have. Thank you.
Is anybody else on the phone? Paul, you have anything to ask? You're okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Come on. Like, you have phones.
No, Dr. Bullock, this is Jacobs. Thank you. You always come well-prepared. Your budget is always in line. And like Councilman Paul Mary said, what you have done at the CCAC is unbelievable, and we look for bigger and better things looking forward.
Well, thank you. And as a part of our treat, our culinary program brought you some more.
I knew it. Well, I was waiting, I saw him. I was waiting over there.
You knew it.
Thank you.
All right. Can I use this one? No, this one. Thank you.
Mr. Fournier, come on up.
You can't possibly top this.
Director Cox.
Who is this about? I don't eat that.
Mr. Rambo, how are you? It's good to see you all.
Always appreciate the French pronunciation, Chairman Paul Messina.
Yeah, I use that French part. A lot of calories up here. John, whenever you're ready.
Thank you.
I think Suzanne's having her third cookie, but.
I'll let her get the container open.
Good evening, members of council. Chairman Paul Messina, thank you for having us here today. I'm John Fournier, I'm the county manager, joined by Tim Cox, our county budget director. Very excited to discuss with you the fiscal year '26 proposed budget. We're gonna, you've got a packet in front of you, we'll go through this page by page. We'll start going through some key info here on the operating budget and talk about cost containment strategies, our general fund, fund balance, and then clean up with some discussion about the bond rating, major initiatives, our capital budget, and end with the federal and state budget impasse, which by the time we're done with this meeting might be irrelevant, but we're going to talk about it anyway. So the first thing I want to point out.
It's good to see you all.
Always appreciate the French pronunciation, Chairman Palmesina.
Yeah, I use that French part. A lot of calories up here. John, whenever you're ready.
Thank you.
I think Suzanne's having her third cookie, but...
I'll let her get the container open.
Good evening, members of council. Chairman Palmesina, thank you for having us here today. I'm John Fournier, I'm the county manager, joined by Tim Cox, our county budget director. Very excited to discuss with you the fiscal year '26 proposed budget. We're gonna, you've got a packet in front of you, we'll go through this page by page. We'll start going through some key info here on the operating budget and talk about cost containment strategies, our general fund, fund balance, and then clean up with some discussion about the bond rating, major initiatives, our capital budget, and end with the federal and state budget impasse, which by the time we're done with this meeting might be irrelevant, but we're going to talk about it anyway. So the first thing I want to point out, for inquiring minds, there will be no tax increase requested this year in the budget. The budget is very tight. We will have to live within our means, and any new initiatives are being paid for with corresponding cuts elsewhere in the budget. Our overall budget growth rate is 1.52%, which is a very conservative growth rate. Some of that is aided by the fact that we will be unable to afford an additional contribution into the fund balance at the end of fiscal year '26. But a lot of this is also aided by the fact that we have been doing quite a bit of cutting, cost-cutting, and identifying internal efficiencies to make the organization a little sleeker and a little meaner. So we'll talk through some of those efforts. If you look at page four, you can see we've delineated county operations essentially by functional areas. This isn't by department so much as it is by the function that our departments have. And you can see the growth or shrinkage of overall expenditures. Our general government operations will be shrinking by almost 17% this year. Health and welfare growing by almost 3%. You can see some conservative growth numbers here. However, I want to point out, under Culture and Recreation, we have a growth of 9.17%. That's mostly our parks budget, and that's aided, that growth is aided by a very generous contribution from RAD this year, which we are very grateful for. And you will also notice, and under Public Safety, an increase of about 4.97%, and that's mostly related to wage increases through collective bargaining that we've had to plug into several of our public safety agencies. Outside of that, you'll see some pretty modest growth rates in county government, again reflecting some belt tightening across the organization. On slide five, I want to talk about our operating headcount and discuss the difference between funded positions and unfunded positions in our budget. Many people may not realize that we actually, you know, our budget has a personnel budget, but there's also a personnel plan that the county has. And for many years, the county would reduce personnel, the personnel budgets, but would not reduce the headcount outlined in the personnel plan for reasons that predate certainly my time at the county. But what I do know is what that means, we've carried a large number of unfunded positions in the county's personnel plan. And that's, A, not very transparent for the public, it's not very transparent for our internal organization to understand what positions, departments, or row offices actually have to hire. And so we are eliminating the vast majority of the unfunded positions from our personnel plan so that the budget reflects a true operating document that you can pick up and read and understand something about the county. But we're also proposing to close approximately 35 funded positions, and we had to do this so that we could get this budget to balance. It is overall about $1.8 million in savings in the operating budget. These positions are chronically vacant positions in the organization, they are not corresponding to layoffs, but they did help us to achieve balance in our budget proposal. You will also be receiving, I'm not sure if it's today or tomorrow when this is communicated to the council, but a proposal to adjust our administrative fees in the county. These are fees for administrative services like deeds and mortgage filings, entrance fees at parks facilities for ice skating, golf, swimming, or other events, permit costs for roadwork and bridge work, and things like autopsy costs at the medical examiner. These are usage fees that the county charges to individuals who need to take advantage of county services. They have not been adjusted in many, many years and have fallen out of step with costs for the organization. And so we are sending over legislation to bump up many of these fees so they can keep pace with the rate of inflation. That being said, we've also engaged a pretty robust campaign of cost containment in the organization over the last year, and that campaign will continue certainly into fiscal year 2026 and 2027 as well. But in the last year, we've done some important things. We have been working diligently to get the cost of agency nurse, especially at our Kane centers, under control, and have found ways to reduce some of our staffing ratios at the Kane Community Living Centers with agency nurses so that we can reduce the overall cost of those contracts. Now, we do have state minimum requirements for the level of nurse staffing per patient. We are still going to be above those requirements. But what we found at the Kane centers is it had become a fairly common practice for our Kane directors to overbid for agency nurse shifts at the Kanes, just to make sure they had an extra couple nurses on staff in case somebody called off sick, or somebody had to leave early, or something like that. And that's really not how you should be managing those contracts. You should be calling in the people you need, and only if you have a vacancy should you be calling in additional help. And so we're tightening those ratios and realizing some savings. We've also rebid contracts for the county employee healthcare, which I will speak more about that in a few minutes. We rebid the contracts for our agency nurses, which realized some good savings for us. We have rebid the contract for the county's purchase cards, which we are in the process of letting right now, and there are many other large contracts for county services that had not been bid in quite some time that we rebid and were able to realize some good savings. We also conducted a benefits audit for county employee healthcare, and what this involves is making sure that you don't have dependents, either spouses or children, who are no longer eligible under county rules to receive, to be dependents on healthcare, that you no longer have them on the plan. And what we do in the county is what most large organizations do, we do what is called a passive enrollment, which is that if you, you know, right now we're in open enrollment for healthcare, any county employees listening, you have until Friday. But if you don't log on and re-enroll for your healthcare choices, they just roll over for the next year, and we just re-enroll you. And what can happen over time is the data gets very inaccurate. Dependents who may have aged out, or may have gotten married and had kids, or spouses who may have been divorced, or something like that, continue on the plan. And so we conducted a benefits audit in our employee healthcare, and I think our final number was 250 dependents who were on employee healthcare who have been removed because they are no longer eligible. So that is going to save us some money as well. We...
What was the price tag of that? Just, I'm sorry to bother you, but...
Of the audit?
No, the 250 savings.
What do we say? Oh, we'd have to model it out. It's going to be good savings, though.
I'm guessing between $1 and $2 million.
Yeah, somewhere in there.
We're self-insured, so if one of those dependents have a different cost, but at least $1 or $2 million.
Oh, great, thank you.
We established an expenditure reduction committee with financial administrators from each of our departments to identify low-dollar savings initiatives that could be rolled together and add up to something meaningful that produced some good results for us in how we purchase supplies and things like that. We're working to centralize IT operations to reduce software redundancies. Our IT operations in the county have existed as something of a confederacy. Many of our departments have kind of operated on their own when acquiring software, and that has caused a lot of redundancy in the software licenses that we have. So we've gone through the process of consolidating those contracts and canceling some. That's, that process is ongoing, it's going to continue for some time, but that will realize some savings. We also have an opportunity to do a structured bond refinancing in 2026 that will allow us to save money on our debt service over the next several years. We're maximizing opioid settlement funds. There is a directive from the county executive to make sure that we're spending this money directly on the provision of addiction services within the county, and we're able to do that at the jail, at DHS, really all over the organization, so we're making sure to maximize that. And then, of course, there's changes to our county employee healthcare premiums. I mentioned that we rebid our healthcare contracts, and what that means, as Tim just said, we're self-insured, which means we operate our own risk pool, but what we pay Highmark and UPMC to do is to administer the claims that our employees have, and to make sure that the claims administration is handled in compliance with our healthcare plans. So we rebid those contracts, and we decided to stick with Highmark and UPMC. I think that shouldn't surprise anybody, but they gave us a better deal to do so. And it also prompted us to have a conversation about the structure of our employee premiums. If you look at page eight of our presentation, this graph shows the increase in the cost of providing our employees healthcare over the last five years. The blue part of this chart is the part that the county pays, mostly out of its general fund. The orange part is the part that our employees pay through premiums, or co-pays, or deductibles. It's a $25.5 million increase over the last five years. That is a 37% increase in the cost of administering our healthcare. That increase, 95% of it has been paid by county government, and about 5% of it has been paid by employees, which is a great deal for our employees, but it is very out of step with even where other public sector employers are in the region. Overall, the county pays, oh, excuse me, in fiscal year '25, our total healthcare costs are projected to be $113.5 million for employees. Employees are contributing about 10.8% of that, which is about 9.5% overall. The public sector average for employee contribution to the cost share of healthcare is 18.9%. The private sector average is much higher than that. We're not comparing ourselves to the private sector, we're a public sector employer, but we're, our employees are getting an exceptional deal, which I'm grateful for, they're wonderful people, they deserve an exceptional deal. But our general fund cannot maintain balance if we continue to eat this level of our healthcare expenses, and we need to find a way to balance this just a little better. And so the way premiums are currently assigned in the county is a flat rate based on income. Every employee who makes, say, $75,000 pays the exact same amount for their healthcare premiums, regardless of what plan they select. And that, obviously, that number goes up the more you make. I think for most employees, it's 3.25% of your base salary. It varies a little bit based on your collective bargaining agreement, but for almost everybody, it's 3.25%. So that creates a number of interesting problems for the county. Some employees are getting an incredible deal on their health insurance. I mean, an incredible deal on their health insurance. But more employees are actually getting a bad deal on their premiums. The employees who are getting a great deal are causing a much higher opt-in rate for spouses and dependents than our public sector comparable organizations, and that is driving up costs for the county. And employees are opting into county insurance even if they have other good options for health insurance. So what we are doing, starting January 1st for all non-union employees, we are changing the premium structure so that it is 1.2% of their base salary plus an additional fee, depending on the plan selection. $41 a month for an individual, $81 a month for an employee plus spouse, $131 a month for an employee plus children, and $181 a month for family coverage. So under the current plan, a person making $62,348 a year, which is pretty much our median salary in the county, they'd be paying $182 a month regardless of the plan they select. But under the new plan, that person would be paying $103 if they selected individual coverage, $143 if they select employee plus child, $193 if they selected an employee plus spouse, and $243 if they selected family coverage. So where does that leave us compared to other public sector employers in the region? If you look at page 12, it's still, it leaves our individual coverage right about toward the, you know, mid to bottom of the market for individual coverage. University of Pittsburgh still has us beat at $62 a month, but the public sector regional average is $92 a month, and the new Allegheny proposal is $103 a month. On family coverage, $243 would still be the cheapest family coverage in the region. You can see the University of Pittsburgh is at $386, the public sector regional average is 438, City of Pittsburgh is at $541 a month. So we're still giving our employees a very, very good deal on insurance. So this will go into effect for non-union employees on January 1st, and we are bargaining with our union employees, and as we reach agreement with those bargaining groups, they will be converted over, and that could take some time, but we will get there. Slide 13, I want to talk a little bit about the general fund. You will recall last year that we had to take $40 million out of the general fund balance to fund the budget. Yeah, you do recall, I know. Fiscal year '25, coming right after the tax increase, we will end the year being able to put about $23 million back into the fund. In fiscal year '26, our budget is exactly balanced, even with this cost-cutting, even with changes to employee premiums and healthcare costs, rebidding contracts. We are still looking at an exactly balanced budget. Our hope is that we can manage the budget at the end of the fiscal year so that we have a positive operating result over what is on paper, and we will be able to contribute to the fund balance, but at this point, we are unable to plan for it. And so why is the fund balance important? You all hear me talk about this all the time, you've heard Tim talk about it all the time. If you will humor me, I will talk about our rating agencies one more time. We had a very good meeting with Moody's this year, they have issued a stable outlook for us and have affirmed our bond rating at AA3. They made very clear in writing when they issued the opinion, which is public, that if we are unable to contribute, continue contributing to our fund balance, they would have to seriously consider downgrading our bond rating. So it is very important for the, for the fund balance to continue to be built up. We are really, at this point, nowhere near what is considered a healthy fund balance for the size of our general fund operating budget, and we have quite a bit of work to do to get the fund balance up. And one of the things that you will see from the county executive and from this administration is a laser focus on improving our fund balance so that we can avoid a downgrade in our bond rating. A downgrade in our bond rating will have downstream costs on the county that will equal to millions and millions of dollars in increased borrowing costs over the next decade while we deal with the ramifications of a, of a bond rating decrease, or downgrade, excuse me. So it is very important to protect the bond rating so that we can save taxpayers from that expense. I want to talk a little bit about some of our new initiatives. As I mentioned at the top, our new initiatives are being paid for by cost savings and belt tightening in the organization. You will recall that the county executive issued an executive order this fall for the creation of the Office of Worker Protection, which is in this budget proposal. We will be rolling in our Human Relations Commission into a number of other offices and operations that we have in the county, including our sick time enforcement wing and the creation of a new safety office into the Office of Worker Protection. This is a budget-neutral proposal, we are paying for it by reassigning existing positions. We are also creating the Department of Management and Budget, and I want to talk about what this means for the county a little bit. Obviously, we have a budget and finance department headed by Tim, his staff is here, they all do a wonderful job. Budget and finance forecasting is only one portion of what a traditional OMB function should look like. An OMB function should also include very close management of the expenditure of county funds, the procurement of contracts, the performance of contracts, and so we are proposing to create this OMB to be something of an internal fiscal watchdog on the expenditure of county funds. And so what we're doing is taking Tim's unit, Budget and Finance, pulling purchasing out of Admin Services, pulling our Equity and Inclusion function, and putting that underneath Tim, creating a new Contract Management Unit, which will be charged with ensuring that our contracts are bid in a timely manner, ensuring that certificates of insurance for all of our contractors are up to date, and also working with County Stat, which is also being placed under the Department of Management and Budget to ensure performance for our county expenditures and our county contracts. This Department of Management and Budget, on your budget proposal, looks like we're increasing Tim's budget by like 300% or something like that, and I just want you all to rest assured that what we're doing, in fact, is moving... that our contracts are bid in a timely manner, ensuring that certificates of insurance for all of our contractors are up to date, and also working with County Stat, which is also being placed under the Department of Management and Budget to ensure performance for our county expenditures and our county contracts. This Department of Management and Budget on your budget proposal looks like we're increasing Tim's budget by like 300% or something like that, and I just want you all to rest assured that what we're doing, in fact, is moving these other offices and units under Tim and creating this OMB model. It is actually an overall cut in expenditures for the county, and as we work through the creation of this office over the next year, we think that it will not just help us find efficiencies elsewhere in the organization, but internally as well. We are also creating a safety office. As I mentioned before, this office will be preliminarily housed in the county manager's office. We do not have what I would call a occupational health and safety function in the county, and this would be internal for internal county operations, not for external enforcement of, of OSHA rules. But it's important to have an organization or a unit within your organization that is focused on things like health and safety testing at county facilities, right? Air quality monitoring, ensuring that employees are able to do their jobs with personal protective equipment, masks and gloves and things like that, that we're doing ergonomic training to ensure that employees are lifting and twisting and bending in the proper ways to cut down on workers' comp claims. The safety office is a really critical component of an organization the size of the county. We don't currently have one, and we need one, and we intend to create one with this year's budget proposal. We also have the continuation of increased funding for Partner for Work and continued investments in the Public Defender's Office and in public safety. On the capital side, you will see increased funding for economic development and housing support. In the capital budget, we are programming in funds for the construction of the Highland Detention Center at Schuman and capital improvements related to the Carbon Neutrality Plan and Arcane Community Living Centers. And lastly, the continuation of this year's Main Street Grant Program, which we are funding through ACED. I do want to take a moment to talk about our 2026 and 2027 capital budgets. We are intending to go to the bond market for a $66 million bond sale this year. That will come to the council sometime toward the end of the first quarter of 2026 or the beginning of the second quarter of 2026, and that will also come with a revised capital budget. Once we get through the process of, you know, understanding where the market is and preparing for the bond sale, we will have a more detailed capital budget that will come to the council at that time for your approval. We're also intending to go to the capital or go to the bond market in 2027 for a $78 million borrowing. As I said before, we have a refinancing opportunity this year as well that we will be pursuing. Okay. Slide 17, Tax Valuation, everybody's favorite topic. You'll notice pretty robust growth in the tax valuation of the county until we get to 2023, when it starts to slow to 0.61%, then 0.57% in 2024. And last year, our overall taxable valuation in the county actually shrunk by 0.6%. This really tells the tale of why Allegheny County has such a tight budget and why municipalities, especially major urban municipalities all across the country, have a tight budget. The continued devaluation of commercial property, coupled with the rate of inflation and, and really intense growth in the cost of our normal operating expenses, is pushing, putting pressure on the county budget, just like it is for all other major municipalities. The way out of this is a rebound in the value of commercial properties. We are starting to see some buildings downtown that look like they're going to sell for a healthy amount. We're hoping that that is a harbinger of things to come, but our position with the budget is going to be one where we are managing through the commercial property devaluation until those values can start to grow, and then things may loosen up for us and we can start making other investments in the organization. But this budget, certainly the budget or two after this, are going to look very similar. A lot of belt tightening and cost cutting to keep our doors open over the next couple of years. Let's talk about the federal and state budget impasse. The county receives approximately $375 million in federal funding each year, and the county receives approximately $1 billion in state funding each year, which includes our managed care Medicaid money at DHS in Kane, which is easily our largest source of funding from other governments. We have instituted a hiring freeze and a discretionary spending freeze due to the budget impasses. I know we are on the cusp of having these budget impasses lifted, but we will be maintaining the hiring and discretionary spending freeze through the end of the calendar year so that we can recover our cash position. We have spent about $150 million since these budgets ran out in money that we expected to be reimbursed from state and federal coffers that has yet to be reimbursed, and that has had numerous financial impacts on the organization that it is not beyond our ability to manage, but we need to keep our hiring and our spending frozen so that we can improve our cash position as we're heading into the end of the year. And with that, that is the presentation on our budget. Tim and I are very happy to take questions.
Thank you, County Manager. Thank you for no layoffs, and thank you for no raising the taxes.
Yes.
I, for one, have to thank you very much for that because I got a lot of phone calls regarding that, so thank you very much. I'm going to go to my left and start with Mr. Klein, Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Palmesino. So, Mr. Fornier, in, in looking at projects, capital projects for the, for 26, 27, you, you mentioned, you referenced sustainability improvements countywide. Are there specific projects that you have in mind at this point?
You know, we're, we want to refine that a little more at this point. We are in the middle of our Carbon Neutrality Plan, and part of that Carbon Neutrality Plan in, I should say drafting our Carbon Neutrality Plan, and a big part of that Carbon Neutrality Plan is doing energy assessments of our facilities. There are various financial mechanisms we can take advantage of under state law to help leverage our resources to make those improvements, but we want to get through those audits and get through the Carbon Neutrality Plan before we are programming for specific improvements. But, you know, that being said, we have a downtown campus that, while historic and beautiful, also just bleeds heat, like, I mean, no building you've ever seen, right? And so, you know, I would not say that these buildings are particularly energy efficient, really, in any imaginable way, and there are probably investments we can make in them that will pay for themselves even over a medium term. And so we would probably want to prioritize, you know, investments in lighting and insulation and weatherization and maybe even HVAC improvements that would have a payback period, you know.
Within our lifetime?
Certainly within our lifetimes. If I had to, how many times do you think in the last year, Tim, your air conditioner leaked through into my office ceiling?
More than once.
More than once is the answer. So it's, you know, we're, these buildings are beautiful, but they are held together in some instances with bubble gum and duct tape, and none, none of it, none of it is very energy efficient. And so if there's ways we can save taxpayers some money and do something right by the buildings and the, and the environment, we're going to do that.
Yeah, yeah, just like when people list their homes, their properties for sale, and they identify them as being charming. My question is always just how charming is it? Going down that path, so the, the Health Department campus in Lawrenceville, does the Health Department still have operations there?
The Health Department would have completely vacated that property had I not instituted a spending freeze because the new offices do not have furniture yet, and they put off purchasing the furniture as part of the spending freeze. There, there is a very small staff down there at this point, and they will be moved certainly in the first quarter of 2026.
And is there a plan for that campus?
We're, you know, we're talking with community leaders in Lawrenceville right now about what the plan is. Yes, we'd like to get that into productive use on the tax rolls and just be very respectful of the vision that, you know, Lawrenceville Corp. and Lawrenceville United have worked on with their community for, for those properties. So the answer is yes, but it's, you know, we're just starting that journey.
Yeah, I, I recall visiting that campus for Health Department hearings, and, you know, at the time, it's very picturesque, and I would often wonder as, you know, the sun was setting, whether Leary the Lamp Lighter would be circulating because, you know, it looks very late 18th century.
Yes.
And, but I just, I kind of lost track of it. Wasn't sure what the plan was for that area going forward, so thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Filiagi.
Thank you very much, Chairman Palmesina. Gentlemen, thank you very much. As you know, I want to say, thank both of you for your time, but you also, for the record, I am going to thank you for spending two-plus hours with myself, our staff, and Councilwoman Bada, because this presentation that you gave was generous of your time and, and the, the back and forth that we, that you allotted us. And while I know it is your job, it was appreciated. Oh, what a difference a year makes, right? So thank you for that, and I want everyone to know how appreciative that I am. And I also appreciate that you were able to articulate, and I think every person here on the dais is going to look back and look at the efficiencies that you spoke about and be as impressed as I was, as I was hearing about it. I encourage more, obviously, but this is major improvements, and no one is suffering, but we are just working on some of the efficiencies that any organization, public, private, personal, needs to look at. And so thank you for being diligent with that. There are two areas I wanted to ask about. Page five, this isn't the time, I'm not expecting an answer, but I think that Budget Director Cox and I have spoken about it when we're talking about the unfunded versus funded and the total and, and no layoffs, and we're maybe cutting the 35, but as to the number 650, what I count is upwards of 1,000 opportunities to perhaps cut, not cut, those are bad words, but see where we can go with the rest of the 400 that are out there that are the unfunded positions. If we're saving this much with 650, by my count, we can also visit the 400 or so remaining, so I'd like to see if we can discuss that and, you know, what I'm referring to. So I just want to put that on the record, that that's some information I'm looking to. Also, wanted to express my, as to page seven, how you outlined the cost containment strategies, again, much appreciated. I will take this time to put on the record, once again, however, when you're talking about maximizing opioid settlement funds and, County Manager, you know that I'm going to keep up on this, is that Exhibit E, in our opinion, still provides for money for emergency services operations through the opioid settlement. And I know that that is not something that has been authorized by the executive, but I'm going to continue to ask for that to be revisited so that our emergency services, which are well-run, can get some of that money to help with all that they do, all the services they provide to people in that crisis. So I'm just putting it on the record that we, I won't give up because it's not all spent, and that's $90 million.
And I appreciate your advocacy on this issue, and, and the state of our EMS organizations in the county is something, I know you and I have spoken about
Yes.
many times, and I think it's, you know, we've had some follow-up discussions with the EMS chiefs, and I might have Crystal reach out and ask for some time on your schedule because I think they're not opioid-related, but EMS-related. I think there, there are some paths forward that I'd like to discuss with you on that issue.
And I know that you're sincere about that, so I will make time on the schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Paul Marion.
Thank you. What's going on at Kane? Why are we cutting back nurses and cutting staff over there? You know, there's some of those people over there, they need help just about as, as much amount more than anybody else, and I really have a problem with cutting back the nurses and so on and so forth. And I know it costs money, everything costs money, but I think it's necessary. We don't screw around with the Canes.
Well, we aren't screwing around with the Canes.
Yes, you are.
Thank you, Councilman. What we're doing is we're engaging in a campaign to hire internal nurses and lower the number of agency nurses that we have. And so as we're tightening ratios on our agency nurse contract, we're also making other changes to the agency nurse contract, like rebidding those contracts that they don't cost the county as much money and making other changes to how the agency nurse contracts are being managed so that we can incentivize people to come onto county staff. It's much better for us to have those individuals as county staff members working internally for the team than to be contracting for them. And so over time, what you're going to see, and we're already seeing this in Arcane facilities, is that ratio of agency nurse to staff, it's starting to change, and it's going to continue to change, and we need the flexibility and the leeway to manage that change so that we can bring those people in-house.
Well, I didn't see anything wrong with them putting a couple of extra people on just in case they needed them over, over the scheduling. It was done in the past. It's been, it's been a practice for years and years over there, and I've never heard, I, I personally go over there, and I know a lot of people over there, and I just have a problem with changing some of those procedures over there. You know, if it's not broke, why fix it?
Well, it is broke. The Canes operate at a $10 million deficit, and they should, we should not be operating the Canes at a deficit.
There's a lot of hell of a lot of other fat that could be cut. We shouldn't be worried about the Canes.
Okay, I'll take that into consideration. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman, Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the investment of time and resources for the cost containment related to healthcare. I think it's much appreciated and noted by all of us here. I wanted to ask two questions. The adjustment that you talked about in terms of the administrative fees that you'll conduct us for a proposal on, are those embedded and assumed already in here that those will be passed and that there won't be a problem or concern with any of those as they're being presented, Doc?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you. And then the question, oh, I guess there's two. The question regarding, under projects for 26, 27 capital budgets, you had talked about economic development and housing support. Can you give us a sense of what that looks like and what some of the higher-level initiatives are that would be underway?
So, you know, following on the successful implementation of the 500 and 500 program, I think one of the things that really struck us is that there, we needed to have some more funding available to kind of prime the pump for affordable housing development in and around Allegheny County. You know, I'm, I'm not going to step out and make any major policy announcements in front of the executive. That's really her bailiwick, but what we can do is make sure that we have a follow-up conversation with you about what we're considering and, you know, the types of initiatives that might be rolling out to, to use for those funds.
I'd appreciate that. Does that also fall in line with the announcement that was made for the Mon Valley with the Senator, with Senator Piscatano? Is that a part of what you're talking about in this line item?
I think those funds could potentially be used there, but I wouldn't say we've specifically penciled money in for a specific project in the Mon Valley at this point.
And then lastly is with the federal funding. Initially, we had heard it was about 117 million potentially, and now there's, that we receive 375 million in federal funding each year. Is the potential loss still at 117 million, or is that something that we will still learn over time, and will you have to come back with us and share a real number?
Yeah, it's a moving target. That 117 was an estimate based off of President Trump's initial proposed federal budget. As time has gone on, you know, what are the chances that Congress adopts that specific budget? I don't know. There are probably some mystics in Washington, DC who could give a better answer than any of us, but what I know is that there's a continuing resolution being considered this evening that would fund the government through the end of January. That gets you a good way through the fiscal year, so the number's probably not 117 at this point, but we won't really know exactly what the potential loss in funding is until there is actually an adopted budget. And I don't think anybody, including the President or Speaker Johnson or Chuck Schumer or anybody, really knows what that federal budget is ultimately going to look like. or anybody, really knows what that federal budget is ultimately going to look like.
So, does this budget make an assumption that was, what was last, received last year in federal funds would be, we would receive the exact same amount this year?
Yeah, and I think our thinking on that is that we are not going to do the work for Washington, DC. If they expect to pass cuts on to us, they are going to have to do the work to make those cuts, and we will adjust to them when they arrive at our doorstep.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Councilman Grisbeck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First question is on the, of course, thank you for the presentation, taxable valuation. I apologize if you've already, if you covered this and I missed it. Do you have a projection for what we're looking at for a percent change in 2026?
Tim?
Probably slightly decreased. There was over 6,000 appeals filed for 2026, $3 billion in value. I think the number of appeals filed in '25 was about 4,500, so still at an elevated level despite the Commonwealth ratio plateauing, so we're very trying to drive water there.
Understood. And a lot of commercial there again?
Yeah.
Okay. The number of appeals is an indicator of activity, but the value of the appeals is probably the more important factor, and we're still wading through all of that. That's harder data, data for us to ascertain, so.
Understood, and I understand that, you know, commercial entities tend to be the driving factor. How much do you think that residential properties will kind of lag behind and slowly start to become a problem? Do you think they ever will be? Just from a theoretical standpoint, I think it makes sense that those commercial property owners have the, both legal know-how as well as the resources, right, to go after those appeals, whereas a lot of residential homeowners generally don't. But I'm curious if you think that we'll see a slow trickle over time of that continuing to be a problem, because I know there are plenty of folks out there that if they would appeal their properties based on the updated Commonwealth ratio, they would see reductions in the taxable amount that they're paying every year.
You know, we continue to see growth in the overall valuation of residential property.
Okay, good, good.
I mean, I don't know, I can't speak specifically to people's decisions about appealing or not appealing, but, you know, even as mortgage rates have gotten, gotten higher and the real estate market has slowed, values are, to an extent, still growing, just not growing as quickly as they used to, right? So, you know, the, most of the decline here is attributable to commercial values, so.
Understood, that's very helpful, thank you. Back to the, the Canes, I wouldn't imagine you'd have this number off the top of your head, but just in case, do you happen to have what your staffing ratios changed from, from, you know, CNAs, LPNs, RNs from before to now?
It's like a fraction of a change. It was like 4.6 down to like 4.3 or something, 4.2.
We have all that data.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could share it after, that'd be great.
Yeah, we have all that data.
Okay.
They're managing on a weekly basis at all four centers now, under new leadership.
Yeah, I think just having, you know, us being able to see those numbers probably would help alleviate some concerns there as well, to make sure that safe staffing ratios are still being achieved, because obviously, you know, the numbers the states set out are not always the most ambitious or necessarily what are supported by, by the staff.
We are still well above the minimum staffing ratios, for the record.
Right, understood.
It's like 3-point something is the minimum staffing ratio, so we're, we feel that we're making medically responsible decisions with the staffing level at Kane.
Understood. Last two questions, just based on, I think, our current budgetary situation doesn't seem like it's going to remedy itself, you know, in the immediate future, and a lot of the changes that are being made, like the downtown Lurda, are more long-term things, right? We're not going to see that, that tax stream come in in the short term. Have there been any talks with the Commonwealth about any new funding streams that we're trying to look at here at a county level?
I mean, we talk with leaders in Harrisburg all the time on a wide range of topics, so, you know, if you're asking me if there are any announcements imminent, no.
Sure.
If you're asked, you know, I, I will tell you that I'm not, we cannot pin the hopes of the budget on a bailout from Harrisburg or DC, and we're not intending to do so, so...
I would say, based on current trajectory, that's probably smart. On the topic of the Commonwealth, again, we heard from PRT at our last meeting, public transit funding is going to continue to be an issue, it sounds like. They've got two years of funding, at which point they are not able to continue funding, and we're looking at those, you know, draconian 35, 40% cuts in service that would really cripple a lot of the county. Have there been discussions? Obviously, we're not in a great budgetary spot to do so, but discussions on whether the county could potentially have more of a vehicle to handle those at the county level if the Commonwealth is going to continue to abdicate its responsibility?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we had very robust conversations with legislative leaders about PRT, and there was, you know, those were wide-ranging discussions that ultimately did not result in a sustainable source of funding this budget year, but I don't think hope is lost. I think there was good ground laid, and we've got two years to try to find a solution there, and there are some options on the table, so we're just going to keep having those conversations.
Understood, thank you. That's all my questions.
Councilman Bada.
Thank you, Chairman Palmesina.
This call is no longer being recorded.
Thank you. So, appreciate you being here, Director Fournier, Director Cox, and happy Budget Passage Day in the state of Pennsylvania for all those who celebrate. So, I remember in some of our conversations, you had talked about an increase in physical infrastructure for security measures across county services and county buildings. Are there any substantive increases in cybersecurity infrastructure across county services given the significant increase in cybersecurity threats for municipalities across the country?
Well, I think it would be fair to say that we have a good team in the county that looks at those issues for us and, you know, recommends adjustments to our operations from time to time, so it is something that we actively are looking at. You know, we program some money through IT for software subscriptions and other support that we take advantage of for those things, so yes.
Is there any increase in financial investment, or is it just restructuring and determining what works best?
I, with due respect, Councilman, I'm not comfortable talking public about our cybersecurity infrastructure, so we can talk about that separately, I think. I'd be more than happy to speak to you about it separately.
Sure, and for anyone listening, it is the best, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Councilwoman Hallam.
Hi, I just have one question tonight. I want to say, first of all, the meetings that we've been having with you have been very helpful, so I don't have the usual million questions that Chairman Palmesina will yell at me about. But I just know twice, at least twice now, I've heard reference to like the plan to reduce the population of the jail, and I've heard it talked about very broadly and vaguely about like a commission of people who are going to come together to work on it. Can you give us a little more detail on that?
Well, it's a, that's a multidisciplinary effort, right? There are a lot of important administrative improvements that can be made across the organization, certainly in the Public Defender's Office, in the Department of Human Services, at the courts, with the DA, certainly at the jail, and making sure that we're making those improvements in a coordinated way so that people aren't, you know, people who have had their underlying issues, you know, charges for crimes or violations of probation, people who have had those issues resolved are not being held in the jail longer than they should be. And I think that, you know, there's a slew of initiatives that we can undertake across those departments to help improve our administrative processing for getting people released who need to be released, and we're, you know, working through the organization to have those conversations with all of our stakeholders. But what I think is that it's, it is a very complicated problem, and it is a, what I like to say, it is a do-with problem or do-with solution more than a do-to solution, and it is going to require partnerships to get done, and the county executive has charged us to do it, and it's something that I think you're going to see a lot of energy around, certainly in calendar year '26.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. President Catina.
Thank you, Chairman Palmesina. Obviously, I mean, I want to thank you, gentlemen. It was a very thorough presentation, I thought, this evening, so I appreciate everything you did.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
I'll get, I do have some questions, but I'm not going to belabor them this evening. I'll get, I'll schedule something at a later date with you, both of you gentlemen. So, thank you again for all your time this evening.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Well done. Once again, I want to thank you for no tax increase, especially no layoffs. I think we've, we turned a corner, I think, hopefully, and we can bring some businesses back into the Allegheny County and downtown, and hopefully, things are positive and on the mend. And I want to thank you for a great presentation. Director Cox, you've always been there for us, always, you've done a great job, so you know, and Rambo and the rest of your staff. Just want to thank you for everything you've done, and hopefully, get home tonight and enjoy the evening with the rest of your family and enjoy yourselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.